Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order of the school board meeting of Tuesday, June 25th, 2013. And of course, this is Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13. The meeting will open with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please? Laura?
Lori?
Here.
Landwear, Ted?
Here.
John?
Here.
Scott?
I'm here.
Okay. Missy? Here. Laura's here.
Great, thank you. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our next item is agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Missy, second by Lori. Discussion on the agenda. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that motion is carried. Announcements, July 4th, holiday, the district is closed. July 18th, Thursday, 5:30 PM, Subcommittee on Board Evaluation Tool Training Room. August 1st, Thursday, 5:30 PM, Subcommittee on Board Evaluation Tool Training Room. August 13th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM, Subcommittee on Policy Meeting Superintendent Conference Room. August 13th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, Regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. Um, what was I... August 15th, Thursday, 5:30 PM, Subcommittee on Board Evaluation Tool in the Training Room. August 20th, Tuesday, 5:30 PM, School Board Work Session in the Community Room. August 27th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, Regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. September 3rd, Tuesday, first day of school. We're all excited. Next on our agenda, oh, Superintendent Kelly, do we have any correspondence?
Chair Bardell and members, no, not at this time.
All right, thanks. Next on our agenda, Communication of the Board. At this time, citizens, employees may briefly address School Board. The Board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the Board? Seeing none, let's move on. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a...
Move that forward.
Okay.
Second?
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Discussion on the Consent Agenda. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that motion is carried. Next on our agenda is Acknowledgement of Contributions. And I'll read the contributions. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B dot 02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district requests, donations, or gift for any proper purpose and apply the same to purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the School Board accepts with appreciation contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $11,104.23. Following donations were made to Valley View Elementary for school uniforms. Columbia Heights Lions Club, $250. Carrie Hepakoski, $9.71. Razu, $116.52. Martha Flom, $50. Following donations were made to Columbia Heights School Scholarship Fund, Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters, $4,500. A donation of $5,000 was made to North Park Elementary by Agency Trading Group for Engineering Camp Tuition. A donation of $190 was made to Highland Elementary by Garbage Man Apple Valley II LLC for the First Grade Bug Show, B-U-G. Donation of $800 was made to Columbia Academy by Lori Lindahl for a loom. Valiant Kind donation of yarn and fleece fabric to Columbia Heights High School from Chris Harris for the art department and encore program. Estimated value, $125. Donation of three helmets and one bike to Valley View Elementary from the Carol Julian Ohana for the bike curriculum. Estimated value, $25. Donation of three bikes to Valley View Elementary from the, from Rita Stoltz for the bike curriculum. Estimated value, $30. Donation of a scooter to Valley View Elementary from Jennifer Cooner for the bike curriculum. Estimated value, $8. Total fiscal year, 2012-2013 monetary contributions to date, $70,486.81. We'd like to thank all the donors for the generous contributions. Do I have a motion?
I'll do, I'll do that. I'll move that forward.
Second?
Motion by Lori, sec, motion by Laura, second by Lori, and a discussion. All right, this is a resolution. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Landwear?
Aye.
Mr. Larkin?
Aye.
Mr. Bardell?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Great, thank you. That resolution has passed. All right, where are we here? Next on our agenda is Discussion Reports and Information Items. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. And Missy?
Nothing to report.
All right. Laura?
Oh, I've been kind of busy. So, well, let me see. Right after our last school board meeting, I attended the 9/16 meeting. They actually had it about a week late. And I guess I got another one tomorrow. We're moving forward on, on the Carner Blue project. Then after that, I attended the work-study session, which we all did. That was the next week. Then we had the groundbreaking for Carner Blue. And that's what the butterflies are. Those were made by students. And they gave those out at, at the groundbreaking ceremony, so.
Very nice.
It's a very beautiful, it's a really nice site. They got a nice level ground, it's easy access, and, and it's going to be a really terrific facility. If anybody's not familiar with this, this is going to be the first of its kind, certainly in the state and possibly in the nation. It is engineered specifically to meet the needs of autistic students. And so the, the building design has quite unusual shape when they, they finally put in the parameters that, that all of the consultants and the teachers, the staff, the students, the parents, and all the data that they have on these students. And it ended up being more like the shape of a dragonfly or a butterfly. So that is why they, they chose the name Carner Blue, which is the butterfly that was indigenous to this area and was threatened actually by our building. So it's going to be the different, our buildings, you know, which of course, we're building another building, so. The irony, I see. The interesting thing about it too is that they're going to, they're going to be using the different quadrants of the building for different geographical types of things. There'll be a forest and a river and things like that. So the, the actual ribbon cutting won't be for another year, but I certainly hope everybody can attend. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be quite a feat. I'd love to, I can't wait to see how this is implemented. So that's what the butterflies are. The students made them for the, for the ceremony. The next thing that I did was I also attended the 50-year anniversary of Anoka County Parks over at Cordiak Park. And I do believe we have our, our commissioner here tonight, so. Is he speaking?
Later.
Later. Okay. So anyway, and I'm sure he can fill us in on that as well. So that's pretty much it for me.
Great, thanks. Lori?
Just the work session, and then I had the opportunity to have coffee and conversation with a couple of board members. So thank you, Missy and Ted, for your time. And that's my report.
Great, thanks, Ted.
I've been to a couple of girls' softball games. They're, they're still going during the summer, so working very hard and they're looking very good, so give them hats off to them. But the school board work session, Chamber of Commerce events, and we may have a donor from one of the Chamber of Commerce members to the district, so keeping our fingers crossed there. Several, couple Lions meetings, and then I was at a WeMap board meeting.
Great, thank you. John?
Other than the work session, nothing to report.
Okay, thanks. And I was also at the work session, so. All right, Superintendent Kelly?
Well, I attended the AMSD Executive Committee Board Meeting, and we wanted to relay to all of you that we're planning the AMSD Fall Conference. It'll be designed for policymakers and administration and teachers. The topic is still to be decided. I had a wonderful time at the Rotary Strives for Scholarships fundraiser. It was a great dinner, great food, great silent auction items, and we raised a lot of money for high school students who are participating in this drive program. And that was with Principal Busman and Director Kristin Stunkel and Chair Bardell. I also was at the school board work-study session, and the admin team worked with Springstead on a presentation of the Satisfaction Survey, just as the Board did. We met with city officials regarding a possible athletic team pilot in the area of basketball. And that'll be talked about a little bit later by Principal Busman. Chair Bardell and Director Holmgren and I had a semi-annual meeting with the Wells Fargo on our OPEB trust and like to report that the fund is sturdy in that area. Local 710 Teachers Union met with Karen Kepel and Bill and Elizabeth and myself for another round of negotiations. That was today. And I met with School Board Chair for multiple times for purposes of the agenda and exchanged a few emails and calls with board members, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Your memory's better than mine. All right. Our, next on our agenda is the Columbia Heights Public Schools Employee of the Year. And tonight, the Board will honor the 2013 Employee of the Year. And presenters tonight, Elizabeth Rushi and Christina DeBon.
Superintendent Kelly, Chair Bardell, members of the school board, we are here tonight to introduce to you and to honor the Columbia Heights Public Schools 2012-2013 Employee of the Year. This is the fourth year of the Employee of the Year program. This recognition is open to current employees of the district who have worked for us for at least three full years. A selection committee is comprised of district staff, parents, community members, and City of Columbia Heights representatives. They evaluate and nominate employees based on strong work ethic, positive role, being a positive role model, initiative and creativity, contributions to worksite improvements, and other key characteristics. This award, this year's awardee will join the ranks alongside Linda Ernst, Pam Segerson, and our social worker extraordinaire Christina DeBon Clavau. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Christina to introduce you to our 2012-13 Employee of the Year.
Good evening. It's not only my pleasure, but it's an honor to introduce John Kulik as the 2013 Employee of the Year for Columbia Heights Public Schools. John has worked in the district since 2003, when he started as the Assistant Principal at the then Central Middle School. For those of you that don't know and weren't part of the process, and I don't know if John knows this either, but it was a team effort. There was a number of people that nominated John as Employee of the Year because of his tremendous work that he does for us at Columbia Academy. And so I had the pleasure to go through all of the nominations, and I'm going to pull out just some of the highlights that really exemplify what an amazing person and Assistant Principal John is for us at Columbia Academy. Each and every day, John Kulik comes to work with a smile on his face and a skip in his step. This positive attitude rubs off on all of us, helping to lessen the stress of a difficult job. He proposed the phrase "gung ho" during his first year here as a way to promote solidarity between teachers and staff as we strive to provide the best learning we can for our kids. Another staff said he is often the first person to come, he's often, he's often the first person to come when administrative staff is called for support and is often willing to help in situations when it seems as though the overall picture has been lost. Mr. Kulik is often seen exemplifying the Columbia Heights school spirit by wearing his Columbia Heights gear with pride as often, as often as he can. He can also be seen either supervising after-school basketball games or perhaps refereeing on the court. Another staff said his strong relationship with the students is always evident as you see him interact with them as they walk into school each morning. He knows nearly every, every student's name and is able to make them smile as they start their day. And finally, students have often said that they not only fear Mr. Kulik, but run to him when they are in need. So, John, you are not only the most deserving person I know of this award, but I am also, I am also very proud to share this title with you. Congratulations.
So, so John, on behalf of the Board of Education, it's my pleasure to, on behalf of Columbia Heights Schools, Employee of the Year 2013 awarded to John Kulik in appreciation for your dedication to our students, schools, and our community. So, thank you. (applause)
(inaudible)
What's that?
Stand?
Oh, I'll stand, that's fine. Thank you very much. You don't even know how honored I feel to receive this award. And it wouldn't be possible without the great staff I work with every single day and the kids. They're just phenomenal. And I'm, you know, people say, "Why do you live so far away?" I'll tell you what, I, you know, I wish I could live here, but we live out west and, but I am so pumped to get here every single day and very excited about doing my job. And, but thank you again for all this. I don't know what else to say. Got just the most incredible people to work for, work with, and all your kids are so lucky. We have the greatest building. A long time ago, we tried to change our name to "The Central Middle School." I know some of you remember that. Just because there's other Central Middle Schools, and I thought, you know what, we were number one, because we are. We're great people, great parents, but like I said, you have great kids, and I wouldn't trade it for anything. So, thank you again.
Well deserved. All right. Next on our agenda, the Board will be presented with information on the composting program at North Park Elementary. We have Principal Sausic and our Anoka County Commissioner, Mr. Jim Cordiak.
Principal Sausic, we didn't agree on who was going to talk first.
We didn't, did we?
No, I think I might, I might intro this, because it is a recognition that Anoka County is pleased to offer to Columbia Heights School System. I've been here once before on a similar related topic, but not this specific one. But I deal as a county commissioner with 100 different things. The Board meeting today, we're dealing with ditch 54, so it's a very, very interesting world that I live in, as certainly yours is, for you also do many, many different kinds of things. But one of them is recycling. We don't like talking about garbage much, but I'll talk about recycling all day long. It's an area that I've been very active with throughout my, throughout my career. When the last thing that we did among recent things in county government was to do our annual recognition of recycling awards to the various entities throughout Anoka County, particularly our cities and many other jurisdictions that work in the area of recycling in this county. One award recognition that we, that we, that we're pleased to offer was a recognition to North Park Elementary School and the Independent School District 13 for their efforts in the area of organics recycling, of managing or the organic waste stream that they have within the school system. Now, you know, I, I think, and Jeff can also talk about this maybe a bit more eloquently than I, but one of the things that I recall from the information that I have is that you have some 500 students there of varying grades and ages certainly in that system. You have about 90 employees. You have everyone from the principal on down to the janitorial staff and secretary folks and in between, working in a common thread, it would seem, to work with the system that you've created. And I know how it ever got started, but they've done a very fine job, I think, of working that in their school system. I think you might recall, I spent a little bit of time in the lunchroom one day watching those joyful young children trot through, putting their garbage in one bucket, and recycling in another, and, and it's a great sight to see, not only in the lunchroom, of course, but you also do it in your offices, you do it in your classrooms. I see them in your hallway. I can see them in your hallway here. So obviously, you have throughout your system been doing a variety of things. I think the North Park's example of the compostable, compost of, of organics management is rather unique, quite frankly. I wish every school, school did it. Every school actively did, did. All of us do certain things, but they really got above and beyond the test of what others do. I think that not only found that it's a responsible thing to do, but it's a cost-effective thing to do. Maybe, Jeff, you can recall what you've done with the waste stream out of the building as, as it departs from there, with the cooperation of Anoka County and your hauler. But I think it's been nothing but a very great success story, and I congratulate you for allowing him to pursue that initiative for you, because it takes commitment from the top. These things do not work unless someone from the top is a champion of that cause, and I commend you for that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, but I'll tell you, we, we'd been wanting to do this for three years, and we were at a standstill until you got involved. So none of this would have been possible without your support, Commissioner, and without the support of Allied Waste also. Let's not forget Allied Waste, our friends there, because if they didn't have the particular program that, that we require, we wouldn't be doing this at all. The other alternatives just didn't work for North Park. So it's something that I know everyone in our building is very proud of. When we have evening events, if we don't have the sorting table out, students are angry with me. And they'll come and say, "Mr. Sausic, I'm very disappointed that North Park is not sorting tonight. Oh, we better go get the table." You know, and it's just really become a part of our culture, to the point that 68% of everything that left, of all the waste that left our building last year was either compostable or recyclable.
So your students, you're touching that a little bit, but, but your students spoke the fact that you also make your tables available for evening family meetings. Not only for lunchtime things, but for other kinds of things going in the school system. I mean, what a great opportunity that these kids are understanding well enough to push the envelope even to the, to the, to others that's around their, their, their school system. As I'm reading, I'm not sure if this information came from you, but you talked about the fact, you touched on that, that the diversion of organic material from the garbage stream, that the number of lunchroom garbage pails filled has decreased. Lunchroom garbage pails has decreased from 18 to less than one a day. That's just remarkable, quite, quite, quite frankly. I mean, it goes on to say that the school has reduced the size of the garbage dumpsters from eight yards to six yards. You pay for waste by the, by the yards, and there's clearly economics in recycling it rather than throwing it in the garbage, because you pay a very different rate for that than you do the other. Not only is it a responsible thing to do, organics handling and recycling, but it's also cost-effective, well-done effectively, there should be at least no more cost in the, in the area of response, recycling, if not, if not less. But obviously, you also do pot bottles and paper and so many other things, and we'll get into that, that so many of us do, but they have really raised the bar. Anoka County had offered a certificate suitable for framing, which I think it is, and you have it with me, Jeff. We have a picture of you and some of your principals, Chris Nelson, your custodian, everybody gets it. Falls it right outside the door. Stan Maraz, your, your science specialist, I think that he was actively involved in this from the get-go, and Rich Hurstein from Allied Waste. So ma'am chair, we'd just like to simply, on behalf of the entire county board who signed that certificate, recognize and applaud your efforts, encourage you to do, to continue to support them, and, and forever try and do a better job to accomplish your goals, to accomplish Anoka County goals. The state of Minnesota continues to lean on us to do ever more, quite frankly, there are clearly arising marches that we're going to have to accomplish, and you can help me to meet that end through initiatives like this. So, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Kelly, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You, Commissioner.
And I will digress for just a moment, for Laura commented a little bit about an event, if you can, if you'll, if you'll permit me. For I had the opportunity, now I not only work in the area of garbage and recycling, but I also work in the area of parks. I have for many, many years throughout my career. Right now, I am Chairman of Anoka County Parks Committee, not that that's critical to this discussion, but one of the things that is interesting is that Anoka County this year is celebrating our 50th anniversary of our county park system. Now, I mean, not only the county parks, it's the state of Minnesota park system. The first county park, many of you may know it, maybe you don't, that was created in the state of Minnesota was the Park Down the Block, which later became known as Albert Cordiak Park. There were not parks, county parks in this state prior to that park and the law that my father helped to pass to enable that. So congratulations to counties for what they have accomplished. We're so pleased, we've gone on to build the second or third largest park system in the state of Minnesota. Think about all the counties, large and small, in terms of the number of parks, the number of acres. Anoka County has a very robust park system that we are very proud of. They're spread out through the length and breadth of our, of our county. They're all oriented along water, waterways, that wasn't an accident, somebody I know well had a hand in it, but we built a very fine system, and it is enjoying its 50th year, which by itself was notable enough. But then when I think about the fact that I did contact Superintendent Kelly, and I asked her if there was some kind of music that we might offer. I thought bagpipes, harmonica, maybe somebody with a flute. So what she come up with, she comes up, she comes up, up through Jeff Palmer, your, your, your music director. They, they put together the Columbia Heights High School Drum Line. Now, as we were organizing, the whole group of us in the park, they're getting ready for a bit on a glorious day, we got this roaring in the, in the distance was the, they're practicing and the grunts here. They marched, they did their march, they marched down the street, playing their music in the park, stood there for, at attention for 20 minutes, playing their instruments for the entertainment of the crowds. They're roaring to listen to, they're a very good group, they were respectful, they were colorful, they were articulate, they were loud. They were lovely. Between that and our Veterans Color Guard, it was a very grand event and very great way to bring in the 50th anniversary into this park. And I very much appreciate that your school board, District, and you, Mr. Chairman, for the efforts of the school board to help make that a great success on my behalf. I recognize that this park, and I go back, as you know, a long ways, but this part, this school system and that park have had a long kinship and a relationship. I think I even heard the other day that, that your teachers have your annual luncheons there. The students certainly do. Pictures and whatever else the connections are, I'm so pleased that it's good for you, it's good for this, for this community, and hopefully you've enjoyed that presence, and I very much thank you for making the cause and the outcome very successful, so.
And we thank you for the park, because we use it all the time.
Try and keep it clean.
Will do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much. Pleased to be here today. Happy to come anytime. Thank you. Thank you. We are your state.
Yep. Jeff's, Mr. Sausic staying for the K-5 Student Handbook.
I can't top that.
We didn't ask you to, so.
Patience, push through. All right. Superintendent Kelly, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, good evening. Tonight, I'm here to do a very short presentation on the Elementary Parent-Faculty-Teacher Handbook, Parent-Faculty-Student Handbook, sorry, for 2013-14. We made very few changes. We went into it with, with the axiom in mind of if it's not broken, don't fix it. So really, what we focused on this year, as much as possible, was to try to make it more as user-friendly as we could, because there certainly... Okay, sorry about that. So focus on user-friendliness. Most of you remember who have taken a look at our elementary handbooks is that we do actually have district board policies in there for things such as attendance and behavior and so on and so forth. What we've done with those is we've moved them into appendices in the back so that it's a much more easier, easier to reference guide for, for our parents when they're looking for specific things. In addition to that, we've had some elementary time changes. Our elementary day is going 15 minutes longer, so our dismissal won't be until 2:20, and that required a slew of time changes throughout the document, which we made, not the least of which was what time, for instance, what time Adventure Clip starts and ends. Next, we had to change our bus company information, because we do have a bus company change, so that was just simply name and, and contact information. And those are the sum total changes of our handbook this year. Are there any questions?
Doesn't sound like it.
John, you have a really nice shirt on.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right.
How do, how do the panbooks get home?
We send them home with students' first day of school. We send them home also, we try to get them home to as many parents as we can on Open House. They're also available online on our school website. They're also available online on our school websites. And we also have a collection of them at the front desk that parents come and get throughout the year as replacements. If a student enters the school mid-year, one of the first things they get from us when they bring their student to school is the student handbook.
Okay. So readily available?
Very much so.
Great.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the K-12 Activities Task Force update. And this evening we have Dwayne Burkus and Bill Holmgren and Mary Busman.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, work here again to update you on the Activities Council. As you know, over the course of the last two years, we've been talking to you about first the task force and now the council. All of this hopefully directly related to our strategic plan, especially as you can see from the arrows here, that we expand access, that we increase opportunities by turbocharging what works and redesigning, making improvement to what needs to be better. And then also that we tell our story, that we increase especially partnership, and you'll hear tonight again how we intend to do that. So one of the things that came out of our task force was the establishment of an advisory council for activities. And Principal Busman and I have been co-chairing that. We've met twice now this school year. We have parents, teachers, coaches, directors, community members, all part of that committee. And we took first the four or five top recommendations that came out of the task force to see if we could work those through and come up with a successful implementation of them. So we did come and talk to you a little bit about this already, but our charges then are to make those recommendations and to monitor the three-year plan, to be in constant communication with the superintendent on these different action steps that we like to make. So we did already talk to you about this one. We have established an Activities Bus that has been running in this past spring and running full. We had lots of kids take advantage of it, so just a good sign that this was a needed improvement. Kids needed rides and it's helping, we think, to increase our participation in activities and also our safety of getting kids home. The other thing that we talked to you about was our fee structure, and we talked about the need to, again, make some changes there so that we can increase our participation, that we can have some consistency, it can be very transparent what we're doing, and that we have a system for communicating what the fees are and collecting them. And so we've talked to you about how we're doing that online and how some of the changes for next year will include reduction of fees for those on free and reduced lunch, but not free. We will have a small fee for them and then rates for those who are not. So we feel that in these areas, we made some progress and we wanted to talk to you about a little bit more tonight.
So Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. One of the other things that we wanted to work on this year, and the task force came up with and the Activities Advisory Council wanted us to work on, was how could we improve our feeder programs in our athletic programs? Why did we want to do this? Because we wanted to improve communication between coaches at the high school and the kids that are younger grade levels who are playing within our community. We also wanted to improve the skills development across the grade levels to really help kids become more competitive and get used to the skills and drills that our high school coaches are using. So we have been working really hard to design a pilot youth basketball program that we would coordinate with the city of Columbia Heights, but the program would be run through the school district with the Community Education Department and the Activities Department. We would begin this as a pilot program this fall, the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. The way it would run is we would, the district would recruit and train our volunteer coaches. So we would still have volunteer coaches, still working with kids in third through sixth grade. The district would conduct the background checks and we would then work with Spring Lake Park, Blaine, and Fridley to create a house league so that our kids would have teams, they would have games on a regular basis, probably about once a week, and really have a rotation that's established and functioning well and scheduled in advance. Our high school students, our plan is that our high school students would also be trained as referees then. And so then we're also connecting our young kids with our older kids who are already playing in the program and really getting that buy-in that we are Highlanders and this is what we're working for, is to wear the blue and gold on our courts. We, our high school coaches, Willie Brazil and Carol Peturka, have already said that they're going to host clinics for those volunteer coaches and also to meet the kids and really get to know who the kids are. And again, to focus on sharing drills, skills development, and even some of the plays that they want the kids to learn. We'll also be working with Minnesota Youth Athletic Services, also known as MYAS. So we wanted to let you know that we would be working on this. We had a meeting with the mayor and Waldface and Keith Winchell this morning with the superintendent and all who could be there who will be impacted and working on this. Director Stunkel was also there, the community head director. And so we wanted to inform you that we've been working on this and are looking forward to next steps so that this is in place for next year's our pilot program.
Questions, comments?
I think this is a great idea. I really do. I can't wait to see how this develops. It would be nice if we could even look at even expanding it into other programs as well.
Right. I forgot to mention that we really want to coordinate with the city on our advertising and the promotion of the programs. And we want to do it well first in one area and one sport. And then if we are able to find success in that and really build our knowledge of how to run the program and coordinate with the city, then we would move in that direction to other sports.
Mary, sixth grade was always part of the rec program anyhow. So you're not pulling anything away from Columbia Academy as far as the athletics, right?
No, and sixth grade, it's, the only sport that the kids can be in is football. And so again, it's continued coordinated efforts.
So we're not taking away from ours to go to that pilot program? Okay.
No, no.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea too. Kind of what's happening with girls softball is the rec department is cooperating with the district to build the teams over the summer. And so I'd like to see it expanded as well, but this is a good start, it looks like. Do you know how it would be funded?
Much like in, unless, Billy, you should take that one. Your money man.
The plan is actually, most of it, most of it should be funded by the fees we collect to be in the program. Until we really get into this and know kind of where that threshold is, where parents are willing to pay and what kind of price, we think most of it will be funded. There might be a small amount that we might have to use activity money to help cover, but that would be very small.
Would the cities be involved in funding as well?
We haven't any talk about the city funding any part of it at this point.
All right. Thanks for all your work on this, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Just like Dwayne's up again, he's going to talk to us about the mentorship program and Xena Stenvik, staff development coordinator.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, this is my first chance to present with you, to you, with Xena Stenvik by my side. Those of you who were on the board several years ago remember Xena. She is our staff development coordinator. I'll use the word extraordinaire at the end of that as well. Very, very busy person doing many different things. One of the things that Xena stepped into was helping us with our mentorship program that was underway when she came about mid-year. So I'll start the report, but Xena really helped with the evaluation of it at the end and really talking with mentors and mentees about the program, so I'll let her do that part. But just a reminder to you that there was a memorandum of understanding with the teachers' union for this school year that said that we would have mentor for all new licensed staff. So that would include social workers, of course, teachers, anybody who has a licensed position. And that our mentors would meet with the mentees for two hours per month, that those meetings would be logged. In other words, we would say where and when and what was talked about. We would pay a stipend then to mentors to do that. And that it would be separate from evaluation. In other words, it would be a firewall, there would not be things shared with principals. This would be completely supportive of teachers to try and help them be successful in their first year in our district. So the only other thing was that those mentors had to be tenured. So in order to be a mentor, you couldn't be a first, second, or third-year teacher, you had to be on that point. So last summer then, we started that process. We knew who our new teachers would be at that point and principals were able to then assign the mentors. So they made the choice of who would be the mentor to their new teachers. In August of last year, prior to new teacher induction, we held trainings for our mentors here in this community room and got them ready for the program. We run every year, as you know, our new teacher induction, and we included then the final day for them to work together. That's when we introduced them to each other here in this room. They went off and started their work together. Throughout the school year, they were coached by Dr. Robert Wamburg, who has been an instructional coach in our district for some time now. He was the lead, he took the lead once the school year began in making sure that things were going well. We had then with him and our mentors and mentees monthly check-ins, where we talked about what's going on and how it's going. And then the mentors and mentees, of course, met twice a month throughout the school year. Finally, at the end, as I talked about, Xena and Dr. Wamburg conducted an evaluation of the program to see how it went. One of the things that we were able to do was create a website where they could go and it's on the Teaching and Learning Resource Site where they could find everything hopefully that they needed. So this kind of became our central location for communication and for getting the documentation, the, all of the different pieces of information that need to be part of this. So with that then, we came back after the school year and talked about, so what were some of our challenges and what were some of the things that went well? And I'll pass it to Xena, do you want to?
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, it's really great to see some old faces and new faces. It's good to meet you all. Thanks for having me here this evening. As Dwayne mentioned, towards the end of the school year, we decided it was important to evaluate and assess and get input from the people who participated in the mentoring program. And so we did poll them and brought them together for a discussion, and that's where we got the data from for this presentation. We had a lot of new teachers this school year, and that meant that it was difficult to match people up exactly to their content area. So we did provide all of the new teachers with a mentor teacher, however, it wasn't always the exact right fit in terms of content area. With that being said, some of the teachers were on different schedules, be it prep schedule or even with, in a very few cases, maybe one or two cases, in a different school building. So they had to go the extra step to coordinate that and we had to help them with that. Another challenge was the mentees, the new teachers, wanted feedback and wanted a lot of coaching and support from the mentors. And being a peer-to-peer mentors needed a little, or asked for a little bit more coaching in the future if they were to do something like that on how to, they just, they wanted to make sure that they were asking and supporting the teachers in the right way and taking care of what they needed to take care of. We discovered that we, well, based on the memorandum of understanding, we provided a mentor to all new staff. That meant that some teachers were brand-new, just out of college, first-year teachers, however, some of our other new staff had been teaching for a few years and needed different types of support. I think it seems pretty logical that the teachers reported that they needed a lot more support in the beginning of the school year, and then that need for support tapered off as the school year went and new teachers got on their feet. And throughout the school year, due to maternity leaves or other vacancies as we hired teachers on, it was important to find that time to provide them with the initial training, the new teachers and the mentors. There were also a lot of positives to the program reported by our mentors and mentees. The mentees reported truly feeling supported by their mentors and we're so glad to have someone there supporting them in the beginning of the school year and throughout. One, they reported having the new teacher induction and getting to know the district and getting to know many of you and our community. Also, where's the copy machine and where's the teacher's lounge and, you know, how do I get supplies? So some of those technical pieces that they needed support with too. So when they were in the same department, that's where we saw the greatest gains and the greatest reporting on positives in terms of the program. So as you can imagine, if you're in the same, let's say, middle school or high school department, you're having regular department meetings and you have more time to meet with each other and you can, you're more on the same page. And so that was where we saw the greatest positives. And we had a lot of positive responses back that Dr. Wamburg was a great supporter and a great coach and instructional leader for the program. And they liked the way that the program was laid out in the beginning of the school year. It was pretty clear what the expectations were for both the mentor and the mentee, and they reported that that was very helpful for them to know what they were getting into. So what's next? So we're looking closely at, the Department of Education is coming out with new teacher evaluations and we are, want to make sure that we're complying with all of the requirements for that program. Part of that, we're planning, again, new teacher induction. That will be August twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, and so look for your invitation soon. Make sure you get it on the calendar for that. And then we're going to make sure that we're continuing the support of our newest new teachers who are, you know, brand-new to Columbia Heights, but also brand-new to the teaching program. We want to make sure that they get off to the right start. So that will include professional learning communities, that will include coaching, and then ongoing professional development.
So overall, I think we felt like the program was a success. We learned a lot from it. We felt that the evaluation did give us a lot of good feedback. But it was a memorandum of understanding with the union, and that memorandum of understanding obviously is now over with the end of the school year. So at this point, we are at this stage where we are planning for, again, the new teacher induction and excited about all that that will mean. And we hope that we'll be able to provide the kind of support that we feel is essential for teachers to be the best that they can be. And we feel we have a good plan to do that.
Great. Questions, comments?
I think that overall, it sounded like it was a pretty positive experience. You know, it's difficult when you're going into a new environment, you know, where is the copy machine? You know, and sometimes you do feel a drift. So knowing that there's somebody that you can go to as a resource, seems, obviously it would work better if they were in the same departments, but I don't see that that particular issue could go, could, you're not, that's never going to be a hundred percent, you know, but it looks like overall, you did a really good job. Glad to hear it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just say we all benefit by having teachers that are the best they can be. So whatever we can do.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda, the board will be presented with information on the new district telephone system changes. Ryan Henneken's, Director of Technology and Security Services. So we're getting a new phone system, huh?
Yeah, breaking news.
Any ears now?
Bear with me for a second. We learned something new tonight, that when two people use the same online tool, only one can be logged in at a time. And so now that means I have to log into the system. So this evening, I'm going to present something a little bit different than what was presented before. Before were reasons why we needed to go with the new phone system. And today, it's more looking at what's under the hood, so to speak, and what changes are going to be made going forward if I can sign into this system.
Maybe. Of course, there's added pressure when everyone's watching.
So just like with Jeff, wait for everything to load up. Again, it's, online tools are great, but they just take a little bit of time sometimes. We'll be better at it next time. We'll download it, and then it'll be separate. Learn something new all the time, even directors of technology. So district telephone changes. Basically, what I want to do is a brief overview of kind of past practice and what our current system is, which is kind of review, and some of the new phone enhancements will be review as well, but maybe just a little bit more detail, and then kind of dive into kind of the technology department adjustments and changes that we're making coming into this next school year. So with the past system, or the current system, it was supported with FTE through our operations department. So it wasn't something that the technology department supported. It was mostly an analog system, old system. There was no audio conference capability, video conference capability to us at this time, and it had limited unified communications capability, which is really bringing in all of the tools together in a unified way where you have access to all of those tools, audio, video conferencing. And then the support of it, because it was such an old system, was limited. We could only add so many people we could go to. If it went beyond what we could support, and then there wasn't a lot of tools. So this is kind of the review part. So again, like I said, what are the changes under the surface of the new phone system, I think, which affect the technology department greatly, is what I want to talk about. With the, as, as we, you know, look at any kind of new system, we look at the strategic roadmap and we decide whether that fits within it. And a lot of what we talk about is communication and being better at communicating. And that's communicating internally and commuting externally. And then there's collaboration tool. So again, talking about the video conferencing to audio conferencing, to be able to do that on a snap of a finger and get people together, whether it be people from Medtronic in a classroom or whether it be somebody from England and they're, you know, they're collaborating with another class. And we use a lot of different tools for that right now. So with this new, with the phone system, we're trying to bring that and unify that together. So like I talked about the audio conferencing, the video conferencing, there's also the chatting, you know, instant messaging that we're all very aware of. There's many tools out there that do it. Again, it's just bringing it all in, into one umbrella. And that umbrella is really going to be unifying it underneath the technology department going forward. So facilitating better reactions, dynamically bringing together individuals, creating virtual worker groups and teams. So really, we want to extend the network to the staff so they can be more productive. You know, more productive, efficient staff means, I think, better education, better opportunity for our students. So some of the adjustments. Obviously, when you bring something into an umbrella underneath the technology department, which really did not include whatsoever, it's kind of a big thing. So there will be an FTE shift into the technology department to help support this system. And when I say support and train the phone system, you know, what we're putting in new, I listed it there, eight network appliances, five, four new virtual service, 550 new phones. We have a lot of that right now, I mean, those products, but they were over here, you know, and now they're under the umbrella of the technology department. So it's kind of a, a big add to infrastructure. And then there was one piece that we were always outsourcing, we were always bringing in outside people to do, which is all of our low-voltage cabling. And what I mean by low-voltage cabling is, you know, all of our connections to our computers, now all of our connections to our telephones, connections to an energy management system for communication and for powering devices, connections to our access points, you know, to give computers a connection, just like this laptop has. That's, all that requires cabling really still. And we've been outsourcing that, we've been bringing in companies. So what we want to do with this, again, is bring that under the umbrella, because all of those components kind of fit together and have it done with an in-house FTE. So things that we've looked at as we move forward with this is just what is this really going to impact the technology department? And what we know right now is that we are, we're automatically assuming a 15% increase in work orders over the course of the fiscal year. So that's a pretty significant increase. So it's a pretty significant add, and that's just with the current phone system that we have and what work order numbers we had in our IT department and what work orders we had in our phone system last year, which would have been in our operations department. So that's a pretty big add. And then we're also assuming an add for low voltage. Tough thing with low voltage is that I think the percentages are going to be pretty low as far as what we could see as a number. But the thing with low voltage is it's considerably more time-consuming because we're actually running cables and doing that in-house. So it's a considerable larger amount of work. So I guess when you look at all of those components, it's, it's a pretty big section add into, into our department, and we're doing a lot of work this summer to prepare for it, make it easier, because it's going to be a big change for our staff. And in some sense, a big change for how we can communicate out and communicate with other people. Like I said, a lot of these tools are already available. We can already do instant messaging, we can already do video conferencing, can already do audio conferencing. Problem is a lot of our controls, it's all hosted, hosted or outside resources. So it's, it's a little bit more difficult. Again, it's just bringing that in and unifying that under, under one umbrella. So that was just kind of a brief, I guess, overview of, you know, kind of the changes under the surface of our new phone system and in making you aware that, you know, we are shifting some FTE into the technology department, this phone system is coming into the technology department, and, and we are making adjustments for that and coming into this next fiscal year.
So it'll be ready to go first day of school?
Yep. August 1st, we're looking at having everything go live, so we're really ready for, we have time, time to troubleshoot, prepare for teachers coming back. So, including all the new tools.
Neat.
Any other questions?
Sounds like this would be more reliable though, since you're doing more here.
Yeah, the groundwork of everything that we're doing is, and again, bringing everything in, it's just, it creates a much more robust, reliable environment for us to be able to do things.
I, I just want to say that this was the, the vision back in the 90s when we did the remodeling throughout the district is to have these, you know, distance learning capabilities and being able to collaborate with people halfway around the world. So it's great to see we're moving that ball forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Action items. Orderly ask to approve the Summer Academy Joint Power Agreement. Mr. Holmgren.
Chairman Bardell, Director of the School Board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. If you remember last board meeting, we had John Clippins here, Director of Summer Academy, came in and gave you kind of an update of what they've been doing over the last few years. I'm here tonight to ask you to extend the agreement we have with, with Summer Academy. I've been included their joint powers agreement in your board packet. It's word for word, the same as it was before, we haven't changed a thing, we're just looking for an extension for a three-year period. So we're just looking for that action this evening.
Do I have a motion?
I'm very pleased on this forward.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Then motion is carried. I think we're all very pleased. Thanks, Bill. 2013, 2014 budget.
Okay, again, we went into the budget in some detail at our work session last week. So tonight, I'm going to kind of give a bridged version of it, and then I'm looking for action on the budget this evening. I have included a summary sheet in your packet. It was the same summary sheet that you saw last week. But I just want to look at some of the highlights as we work through this spring, especially when we look at, at revenue. The state of Minnesota, we had a lot of work with them. I am pleased with some of the things that we received. Most of the things that we are going to receive actually for a year from now, they're not this year. But here are the things that we do have for this year that are, are new or different. First of all, we have a hot, one, one and a half percent of an increase on our formula for our students, which amounts to about $250,000 for our, for our general fund budget. Again, that same percentage got pushed onto our categoricals, and really what the biggest piece of this category of revenue is our compensatory revenue, but also falls onto our class size reduction money. So that's where this, this money is coming from. We got some special ed relief. This is to help the sub, the cross subsidy that we are actually subsidizing, general, the specialized from a general fund. So this is the money that we are receiving back. So this is really great news for us going into this next year. And we talked about this a little bit. We're actually, the state's going to have us all paid back. They will not have, be holding any money from us now at the end of the year, except for what we usually do for a couple of months as we close everything. But we should receive about $75,000 in interest in next year's fiscal year, just because we have all our money in the bank. So we do not need to do any cash flow borrowing, so I won't be coming to you, asking you to do that. Remember, last year, we borrowed $6 million just to keep payroll moving. And then restricted revenue, we actually got quite a bit of new revenue. What this amounts to is some increase in compensatory dollars. We have set aside now dollars again for our staff development, so these are in here. We won't be spending all these dollars in this year, but substantial increase from where we were a year ago. Now, I want to point you to the, the sheet that's on your, in your packet, just because it's a little more detailed and you can see a little better. It's hard to get it up here on the screen and get everything on here. But, you know, it just started right at the top under the, under, the unassigned dollars, these are the dollars that we can use for all our programming that's not tied, or we don't have any strings tied to them. You can see that for next year, we're looking at bringing in $29.3 million and spending $29.3 million. You have a balanced budget, little excess, $4,000, and a budget our size, really, that's not considered excess, but we don't have any red numbers. I just want to point out again, health and safety, you see that as a negative number. This is normal. On a yearly basis, we put our health and safety projects together, we do our, our health and safety projects, and then we levy for the money later. So the fund balance for our health and safety is negative on a yearly basis, so that's why you're seeing a red number there. Then, again, for total restricted, we're up from last year. I mean, we're going to see an increase in that fund balance, and then overall, in our general fund, we'll see an increase of $141,000. So that's great news going forward for us. Fund two, or our food service budget, we have a capital project that is, that's why we've seen some negative, some negative dollars there at a one-time basis. When you look at the community ed and you see that negative number and the change in their fund balance, that's also based on some new programming and not exactly knowing exactly how that's going to pan out. So we're being conservative there, we don't want to say we're bringing in money that we're not, but we, I worked again with Christian this past week, and we really see this as a, as a one-year phenomenon. Okay, let's just touch again on debt service. You see a negative number in debt service. This actually, we have excess dollars in our, in our fund seven, which pays our, all our bonds, and when we see a negative here, we're actually spending, we're spending more than we're bringing in. So technically, what's happening is some of these dollars are actually going back to our, to our taxpayers, because we don't need as much in that fund balance as there is. Okay, so we're deliberately lowering the fund balance, which lowers our levy. Touch on the severance trust, and this is money that was, actually, it was a little bit, I don't want to call it extra, but there were some dollars left in this fund when we set up the OPEB trust. When we, we funded the whole OPEB trust in full, there were some dollars that had been set aside for that that weren't used yet. So the auditors are allowing us to use that for our straight cash severance payouts. We will, I expect us to use this up now in this next year. We are foreseeing a pretty good number of retirements when we look at next June. And then again, the, the OPEB trust, we are using a little more than we're bringing in in this situation, but we are overfunded in, in the OPEB trust, so this is nothing to be alarmed about. So this kind of gives you an over, kind of overview of our budget for next year. I feel very good about it. I think we consider it to be in a very sturdy place. We have a fund balance of over $5 million, and we actually have most of it in the bank. So that is great news, and I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Questions?
I'm just so pleased that we've got money in the bank and we're not borrowing it to put it in the bank. Yeah, that's awesome. Okay. Good work as always.
Yep, thank you very much.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it forward.
Second. Motion by Missy, second by John. Any further discussion? Yeah, Ted?
I just want to say that with all the uncertainty that we just came through through the legislature, I'm glad we still have money in the bank. We, you just never know what's going to come down the pike.
You're absolutely right, Ted.
Yep, absolutely. All right. Any more discussion, questions? Seeing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Then motion carried. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the ESEA grants by Mr. Burkus. Can you remind me what ESCA is?
Better known as Title. Title I, Title II, Title III are government, US government funding that we apply for each year, that we use primarily for remediation, science, support in math, support in reading. So tonight, I'm here again to, to ask the board for approval to apply for the dollars in Title I, Title II, and Title III. Title I is by far the largest fund and is the only one that we know our exact amount for next year. The other two are pending, and we should know what they hope within the next month what Title II and Title III will provide us with. Title II is mainly for staff development, it could also be used for class size reduction. Title III is for our English learners. And so every year, we build off of the budget that we apply for programming within, of course, those three broad areas of science, math, and reading. But we also have mandatory set-asides that are part of those programs for parent involvement and staff development. So we will be, hopefully, I'll be at, actually, I'll be at MD tomorrow, learning more about what the latest regulations are from the federal government for these programs. But we will write then a, a program for, for the use of these funds and send that into MD for approval. So I'm here just tonight to ask that we again have your approval to, to apply for these monies.
Have a motion, move it forward.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura. Discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Then motion is carried. Thanks, Dwayne. All right. Next on the agenda is the LEA authorization.
And I can let you know what that one means too. This one is the Local Education Agency, and we need to have an approval for me to be the representative of that. Basically, it means that I'm responsible for developing that proposal to the state, that application, and that what we do with those dollars is in compliance with the federal regulations.
All right.
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Missy, second by John. Discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce.
Chair Bardell, members of the, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. I'm here to hear tonight to ask you to renew our membership in the Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce. This is, I think, an organization that, we have a lot of benefits from belonging to it. It really gives us an avenue into the business areas of the community and gives us really a, even a mouthpiece in some, in some ways where, actually, there's, there's meetings that I go to and, and present, talk about the district and what's going on. So I think it gives us a nice avenue into the business community, and at the same time, we get support back from them. They actually come in and during our first week of our new, new teachers, they come in and present to them and kind of introduce the community to them, so it's a, it's a great benefit. So tonight, I just ask that you renew this, we're looking at a $10 increase from the year before.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll move that forward. Second.
Motion by Laura, second by Missy. Any discussion?
I won't be able to vote on this because I sit on the chamber board.
Okay. Thank you. Is that the one that beats down here? That one, or are you on the, this is, that's not the local one here?
No, Chamber of Commerce. Yeah. We have our local meetings here though.
They, they provide the, they do the new teacher practice as well?
Correct.
Yeah. I'd just say it's a great way to build connections.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And they do some, they bring in speakers for career. Do they do that as well?
That is also correct, yes.
Well, we definitely need to have a relationship with them.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Then motion carried. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next agenda item is called School Board Appointment Liaison. And I'll read the background. "That's organizational meeting on January 8, 2013. The board appointed Member Lee as WMEP rep from the Columbia Heights Public School Board with Member Landwear to be appointed at a time to be determined during the term ending December 31, 2013, which is the term. Split appointment was agreed to by the board to provide continuity of representation due to WMEP being engaged in certain legal matters until such time matters concluded. In response to learning that the Columbia Heights Public School Board was considering changing WMEP representative during the term, WMEP chairperson Bassett sent a letter to Superintendent Kelly dated May 28, 2013, in which Ms. Bassett expressed her desire that the Columbia Heights Public School Board not make a change in the representative prior to the end of the year due to, quote, 'weighty and complicated,' end quote, legal matters, though stating that decision was solely that of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. Certain of such WMEP legal matters have been resolved as of early June. However, it is our understanding that additional complex issues at WMEP are pending. By honoring WMEP's request to maintain continuity of representation, at WMEP, we would further delay any transition to Member Landwear until such further issues wind down. Member Landwear expressed a desire to discuss the WMEP transition matter further. The WMEP transition matter was discussed at a work session, June 18, 2013, in order to try to resolve for the board and WMEP the uncertainty who the WMEP representative from Columbia Heights Public School Board is for the remainder of the term. It was acknowledged at the work session that the board's decision to make a split appointment of Member Lee and Member Landwear was made without consideration of WMEP's thoughts on split appointment. Member Lee repeated that additional complex issues at WMEP are pending, but did not elaborate on those issues because of her confidentiality obligation to WMEP. Member Landwear advocated that he be appointed during the term at a time certain, not convinced that Member Lee would relinquish her role as WMEP representative at the end of this year. Member Lee publicly stated at the work session that she was done serving as WMEP representative at the end of this year. Another suggestion was to prospectively name Member Landwear to be the WMEP representative from the Columbia Heights Public School Board for the 2014 one-year term. However, concerns were raised about encroaching on the decision of the Columbia Heights Public School Board resulting from the statutory required organizational meeting to be held in January 2014. In order to resolve the WMEP transition matter for this year, a suggestion was made at the work session to allow the board to vote on whether Member Lee remains a WMEP representative until the end of the term." So, the motion is to amend the motion adopted January organizational meeting-related appointment of board representatives by striking, quote, "Ted Landwear TBD," end quote, for the WMEP representative, so that Missy Lee will serve as WMEP representative for the duration of the year. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by John, second by Missy, discussion.
Yeah, I guess I didn't, I didn't exactly, this is not what I, what I was, what I had understood we were going to be doing. I don't, I don't really see that this is even necessary. You know, obviously, there's things going on over there. I don't even know why we're amending this. It doesn't make any sense to me.
I would agree with Laura, and we tried to make that determination at the work session. My understanding is that in order to put this to rest, so it doesn't keep coming up, is that we need to change, we need to amend the motion so that there is no question as to what happens to the year end, and then we follow with our organizational meeting in January. I think that was the way it was intended, Scott.
Yep.
I don't know.
That was the suggestion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think that this is necessary at all.
What would you propose as an alternative?
Well, obviously, there are things, you know, there are things going on over there, and I think we all understand that, that there are some issues that need to be resolved. And, you know, I think we should just let it ride and just go till, you know, next year when we have our organizational meeting.
Again, we tried to do that last week, and help me out, Ted, but you weren't comfortable with just allowing it to go as it is and then have our organizational meeting in January. That was my understanding, is that you weren't comfortable with going that path. Is that correct?
No, actually, at work sessions, we can't take any action. We're not allowed to do that. So we couldn't have resolved it at the work session. The discussion was, is, and I'm the one that brought this forward, out of transparency to the public and everybody. I wanna make sure everybody knows what's going on. I was appointed along with Member Lee in January, as the background says. It had been seven, six months now since I was appointed. So, and I'd been attending WMEP meetings, trying to get board meetings, trying to get up to speed, spending a lot of hours just so I could step in. And there wasn't an opportunity, Member Lee has said that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you're involved in legal matters that would not allow you to leave. It would be a bad idea to leave at this point. So now there's a break over the summer. They'd start up again in August. And I wanted, that's why I requested the board to consider a motion to appoint me on the board as of August, the August board meeting.
You didn't mention that at the board meeting.
At the work session, that never came up.
At the work session.
Well, no, that's what I told Superintendent Kelly.
Not at the work session, so it's outside after order, so it doesn't count.
Well, that is the intent of bringing this issue up. And I did say I wanted a date certain, right?
Yes, you said date certain, but not August 1st.
Right, and so that, that was the intent of me bringing up this issue. We did not discuss a date certain. I don't know why we didn't discuss a date certain. I also think that this motion is not necessary. Obviously, from what we discussed, I get the impression that there isn't support for setting a date certain on the board. And so, in that interest, in the interest of continuing, continuing on, I would recommend that we just don't pass any motion and just allow Chair, or Member Lee to continue on as the WMEP representative. I think that will solve the problem, based on the conversation that we had at the work session and tonight.
So you're comfortable with this is not an issue anymore at this point?
No, I think, based on, and correct me if we're wrong again, I think the intent at our work session was that at the end of December, the intent of the board was at that point to put me on as the WMEP representative. But we couldn't do that. We were not comfortable taking that step at this point. But we did discuss that at the work session. As long as that's still the feeling of everybody, then I'm comfortable just leaving it as it is.
So is it safe to assume that your feeling has changed since the work session when you were asked your comfort level there? That you said you're not comfortable with it, because you know how things turn out here, and that's why you wanted a date certain? Is, I took that as, the people in the discussions that we had, and I think it was generated by Laura, is that let's just let this go. Let's handle it, it'll take care of itself. And you weren't comfortable with that, and it was almost as if you didn't believe the people that were at the table with you. So has that changed now and then? Is that what you're saying?
No, what's changed is this motion, that's, I understand that you, you two worked on it, Member Larkin and Member Bardell. I understand from your-
I worked on the back. We worked on the background. The motion was drafted separately.
Okay, did you work on drafting the motion as well, or?
No.
Who did that?
Our parliamentarian.
The wording of the motion?
Yes.
Was the intent of the motion worked on by you two, both of you, or?
I had nothing to do with the motion.
I had nothing to do with it.
Okay, my assumption is incorrect. But if this is the feeling of the board, then, then yes, let's just, let's just leave it as it is. And then if that was, if the intent is, was as stated at the work session, I'm comfortable.
That seems different than what you stated at the work session, so I'm confused, but...
When I go back to, is, so you're telling me then? And I took this as, personally, I'm not gonna speak for anyone else on the board, but I told you that you have my word, that this is what we're going to work for. I know we can't make agreements, or we can't make decisions in a work session, but I've very specifically stated to you, this is what I'm willing to do. Laura was very specific about that. I asked if the group was in agreement with that, and you were very adamant that that was not acceptable. And I'm asking that, so you're, this is a complete reversal from where we were?
Well, I don't remember it that way, but I'm telling you that since time has elapsed since our work session, I am comfortable with just letting, and I've talked to other board members in the meantime. I'm comfortable with leaving it as it is, with the understanding that change would be made in January, with the intent that I would be elected as the WMEP rep at that time.
Well, I think we need to be careful with taking it quite that far. I certainly think to say, my understanding was, Missy would be done. When we had our conversations, is Missy would be done, and we'd make a change January 1st.
As I stated in the work session, and I will state publicly right now, I gave my word that I was done on the WMEP board. Actually, I have spoken to the WMEP board and also told them I was done in January. Member Landwear did at that time say that he did not feel comfortable because he knows, quote, "how things turn out." So that is what brought it forward. So if, so what you're saying, and I think, and I'm reiterating this, is that you have changed your view since the work session?
No, I have not.
So you don't, you don't trust how things turn out still?
I didn't say that. I don't recall saying that.
You did.
You absolutely did.
You did.
Yeah.
I actually wrote it down on a piece of paper.
Well, I have your word that you're not going to, we have your word that you're not going to run again for WMEP.
Stated that in the work session several times.
Right, so at this point, I don't think this motion is necessary. We have, we have, we have to start trusting at some point.
And that's what I would recommend for you.
Well, and I-
I would love to be able to do that.
Whatever the, whatever direction we need to go to put this to rest, to trying to come up with a date certain for this year, I'm certainly agreeable to if that's, we don't vote on this motion, or we let it die, or whatever we need to do, I guess. But with at least clear understanding from my perspective that Missy's done at the end of the year, and we make a change January 1st, and I'll stop at that point.
Right, I agree.
Well, then I would just say, add to that, then that's a change from what we discussed at the work session, because clearly, what we were discussing at that point was in January to, for Missy to, with Director, Member Lee to stop being a WMEP rep, and myself to start, although we could not speak officially for that.
You're right, that was right up until the point that you, Ted, said that my word wasn't good enough for you. So at that point, that changed things for me.
That's where this came up, yeah.
That's what changed it for me. I'm not saying that I won't support that, Ted.
Again, I didn't say it wasn't your word was not good enough for me.
No, that was my interpretation at that point. The, and I'm not saying that I won't support you in January. I'm just saying that I'm not gonna sit here in a meeting in June, right? June still, and say that I'm absolutely gonna do that. I mean, we, obviously, we do need to work on our trust factor as a group here, and I'm willing to do that. But I'll just say that absolutely done, change January 1st. That's my comfort level at this point, so not specifically guaranteeing someone to have that spot.
We can't guarantee it. No, and nobody, nobody should, I mean, as near as I look at it, at every organizational meeting, it's a new board, even if we're the same members.
And I'm certainly not asking for a guarantee. I'm just trying to restate the intent that I heard at, in order to communicate, to restate the intent that I heard at the work session. If that truly is the intent, then I think we should move forward without, this motion's not necessary.
Yeah, and I actually agree, and that's, I think that's the reason that I would like to just not, just not move forward with this motion, is because I do think that there is a certain level of trust that we need to exhibit.
And I hate to belabor a point, but just for clarification, Ted, on the, the understanding of the intent is Missy's done December 31st, and there's someone new January 1st, correct? And that's-
I think that's my understanding.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'm good with that. Thank you. So now, what do we gotta do?
Yep. All right, we-
So the intent is to essentially just get a, okay. Is the motion maker willing to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Is there any objection to that from the board? Then that will do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is withdrawn.
I just wanna say one point. I think what would really help for consideration is if we do talk to each other between board meetings. I know we can't talk, we have to be careful with serial board meetings, but a phone call between board members would really, would have really helped in this situation as well.
All right.
I think that's a good idea.
Board topics. Any board topics?
I just would like to remind everybody that the jamboree is coming up this weekend. I think the-
Parade is Friday.
Parade's Friday, fireworks on Saturday down at Housset Park. And I know that they have the carnival they're getting set up for. They closed off the street. I don't know, I think they usually open on Wednesday, but if you go down there, it's closed. It wasn't my fault, so for sure Thursday. I think it's Wednesday, but, oh, you know what?
Carnival opens at noon on Wednesday.
Noon on Wednesday? Okay, then it's not my fault.
I actually have a question. Okay, a neighbor of mine, right after the storm, said a fire truck came flying through down Reservoir Avenue.
We never fly. We drive-
I know, but, well, yeah, very safely, yes. Well, there was a tree in the road. And apparently, some, that had actually spun. I mean, amazing drive.
That one of the trucks hit it, or?
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Oh, somebody's car or something?
No, no, the truck, because there was a tree in the road, and it spun.
The truck spun?
They said it was like something out of, maybe it was a tall tail, I don't know.
I can reasonably assure you that if any of my drivers were spinning sideways down 40th, that I probably would be-
40th Avenue.
I would be the last person to hear about it, I can tell you that right now.
Last person?
Yeah, I'm the last person that are gonna tell me that that happened in a truck unless they hit something, so.
No, no, they didn't hit anything.
Okay, then, I can't confirm or deny.
Okay. It was just kind of an entertaining little rumor that I had heard, so.
All right, before we adjourn, is there anything else that's John's fault?
It wasn't John's fault. I just wish we had a video of it. I guess they said it looked just like a movie.
I would love to see that video. It was, and that's maybe going off subject, but it was, it was a crazy night.
It was, it was emergencies everywhere.
I think a lot of people, well, I know a lot of people lost power, and I think that, myself included, learned to appreciate some of the utilities, some of the things we take for granted on a regular basis. And I thought that, I talked to an XL Energy supervisor today, and he said they had 15 different states represented in, just in the metro area. Well, there's an XL representative over there, too. But we had the opportunity to meet some of the linemen from South Dakota today. They were, they're just phenomenal people. I don't, they scare me. The stuff they do with power lines is, and comfortably is amazing, but-
They were working anywhere from 16 to 20 hours a day. And they were down from Texas.
Heights is getting close to being done, but he said they were down to the lines. The energy that they were providing was down into the less than 100 range, you know, where instead of the big switches they were flipping, you know, was 1,000 here, or whatever, they're down to less than 100 and catching some onesie twosies along the way. So hopefully, our residents are getting their, getting their electricity back.
Yeah, I just wanna say, as a Lions member, I wanna thank the school district for their participation in the parade. And we have over 100 units this year, so it's always a great celebration of Columbia Heights.[1728.98]